Good evening, the Rio Rancho Public Schools Board of Education meeting for Monday, September 8th, 2025 is now called to order. And if all would please arise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Board Secretary Jessica Tyler will be present.
I wonder what you do.
I am the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in whose name we call liberty and justice.
J.C., can you do a roll call for us, please?
President Yalbert.
Present.
Vice President Morgan.
Present.
Secretary Tyler.
Present.
Board Member Chris.
Present.
Board Member Miller.
Present.
We have a forum.
Thank you so much. We'd like to welcome everyone out to our boardroom tonight. It is so fun to have so many faces here with us. And there was just so much happiness that was happening in the boardroom, which is delightful. And we do want to apologize for being a little late. We are having, we are still currently having technical difficulties with our live stream. And so we're going to go ahead and start through our meeting, but please be aware there's a chance that we will be doing a recess in just a bit to check out those difficulties that we are still experiencing. Due to laws here in the state of New Mexico, we have to be able to broadcast our meeting live as it's happening. And so if we're unable to do those things, then we need to, well, we may need to cut our meeting short tonight. And so with that, I would like to introduce Dr. Bissou Cleveland, and she will start out with some comments.
Thank you all for being here, and we apologize for the delay, and we appreciate your patience. We have some wonderful commendations this evening. Jay Reader will be presenting the Special Education Staff Members of the Year during this board meeting. These individuals have all gone above and beyond in working with children with disabilities for every school side and also in all of our major special education programs. It's a pleasure to recognize all of them for their successes in our classrooms and schools. And many of our principals are also in attendance to support the staff members from their individual campuses. Our commendations are Robin Brownwell, Tiffany Feldman, Eryland Konitsky, Rebecca Sebedra, Marley Couch, Eric Sanchez, Rebecca Callenberger, Carla Chagas, Jennifer Coca, Lisa Romero, Amber Reto, Jaime Kush, Sherri Smith, Latisha Romero, Lisa McCartney, Brenda Gardunia, Erica Black, Marilyn Johnson, Mary Scowan, and Blending Grant, Christine Phelps, Jordan Lights, and Eileen Nieto. We welcome all of you and your principals and other family members who may be here this evening. And certainly, we will have some other additional information when commendations are presented. We have a second meeting for Policy 1022. Michelle Havel, our Executive Director of Student Services, will present a proposed policy change on reporting student abuse of alcohol or drugs. This will be a second meeting. Therefore, the board will be asked to act on the agenda item this evening. That means that the board saw this two weeks ago, had an opportunity to read it again, to ask questions, to ask for additional information. New Mexico law requires that school district employees who know or in good faith suspect a student abusing or abusing alcoholic drugs is responsible for reporting this information and cooperating with the school administration. This includes during school hours, during school events, and outside of school events. School employees are not responsible for investigations. Investigations are conducted by trained school administrators as they look into those allegations. This is a professional duty and responsibility. It's also a moral and ethical one. And so if we suspect that children are being abused, or we suspect that children are having serious problems with substance abuse, we have an obligation to report it. And the legislature made that a requirement, but they also gave protections that as long as it was done in good faith, there could not be any repercussions to the individuals who reported. We have the Preventative Maintenance Plan for 2025, 2026. Patrick Martinez, our Executive Director for Facilities, will be presenting the Preventative Maintenance Plan for the board for your consideration. This plan covers the work for maintenance, grounds, and custodial service teams. This plan is really an important tool to assure that the district's assets encourage, promote, assets encourage, promote, and maximize safe, functional, and durable learning environments. Facilities speak a lot to how much we value people, how much we value students, and how much we value the learning process. The purpose is to assure that Rio Rancho Public School operations are running efficiently and that it will maximize our expenditures as well as extend the life of the building systems and equipment. And we all know if you don't take care of what you have, in the end, you will spend even more trying to remediate problems that developed because you did not do that preventative maintenance on facilities. So we have a good plan for the board. The board's been presented with that plan, and will answer any questions that you may have this evening. We also have a Memo of Understanding between Rio Rancho Public Schools and the Rockaway Family Foundation. This agenda item will be presented by Dr. Kurt Schmidt, who is our Executive Director of Fine Arts. The foundation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and its headquarters is in Colorado. This MOU is a continuation of previous agreements with the Rockaway Family Foundation, and it has been beneficial to the district and our students and families. This is a somewhat unusual agreement, and it involves both the loan and sale of pianos. We are very appreciative of having this unique opportunity available in our community. We also have a proposed Santa Fe Opera and Rio Rancho Public Schools Agreement. This item will also be presented by Dr. Schmidt, and it is an example of another longstanding agreement that provides just amazing benefits to our students. This agreement is between the district and the Santa Fe Opera. The agreement provides students in our schools with special opportunities to learn through different art forms such as dance, theater, music, poetry, visual arts, or media arts, and kind of a precursor to what we are doing this year at Enchanted Hills and San Diego Vista with the arts. Instruction is provided by teaching artists who are affiliated with the Santa Fe Opera and are supported by our own Rio Rancho Public School program coordinators. I would add that they have to meet all of the safety requirements before they come onto our campus and work with our students. We have a call for legislative resolutions. The board is asked to consider submitting our district's resolutions to the New Mexico School Board Association for the 2026 Legislative Session. These resolutions have the potential to be included in the school board's legislative platform as well as in strategic initiatives for the 2026 Legislative Session. This year, local boards were asked to avoid submitting items that are included already in the New Mexico School Board Association Legislative Platform. So you may say, well, why isn't that in there? Or that's a really high priority. And you probably will find it's already included in the school board's platform. And again, we were asked not to resubmit them if they were already there. You can find that information on the New Mexico School Board Association website. And Lauren Hatch, our Chief Legal Counsel, will be presenting this agenda item this evening. And here are the resolutions, and we will talk about them one by one when we get to that part of the agenda. But they are support for career technical education, both for staff and for staff salaries and for equipment and for refreshing things that we have over time. Funding for adequate buses. I think you all know that our kind of crazy schedules that we have, especially to elementary, is due to the fact that we do not have sufficient buses for all of our elementary schools to operate on one tier. We ask year after year, really, you know, really push that we need those buses. The last time we had a consultant come in, said we were short about 27 buses in the district, and that's what necessitates that extra cycle, an extra tier for student transportation. I think Albuquerque and Rio Rancho are the only districts that have that challenge, and we would like to see that eliminated for our district, but for any others, they do not have sufficient school buses. We also have one related to teacher licensure advancement, additional funding for special education positions, and that's geared toward primarily the highest, working with the highest need students and teachers who have specific challenges with regards to very high need children, require extra knowledge or skills, and are just honestly very difficult positions, sometimes to fill. And we so appreciate all the people we have. We would also like to be able to recruit more, but we would like to see increased compensation in some of those programs. We would like to have an increase in capital improvement, improvement in capital, outline funding, and funding for cybersecurity and computer refresh. We live and die by our computer system. You see tonight, we live and die tonight by this particular system. Everything is automated. Everything requires a very high level of security, and we need to be sure that we can protect our district, our district's information, our day-to-day operations. And several of our districts in New Mexico have had really disastrous experiences when their data has been breached and very confidential information has been given out. And so we've been very lucky, and lucky is the wrong word. We have a really strong team here that works to protect our district. And it's, but we do need additional funding to continue to stay ahead of those folks who want to somehow get into our system and make inappropriate uses of our data. And then another that we're really facing, and we've had some conversations recently with Terry Meyer and with Scott Lepelmann, many of our computers are aging out now in very large numbers, and we're going to have to do a major refresh at some point with our Chromebooks. And so that's going to be very expensive, probably five to six million dollars. And we would love to see the state step up and help with that refresh process. And that is not just true of Rio Rancho, that is true of almost every district in New Mexico. And, you know, we worked to get computers initially purchased, but the ongoing cost is how do we continue to keep them updated, and how do we ensure that in time times that we can replace them when it's needed? Probably wouldn't do that all at once, but we need a cycle and a plan to do that. And then the last is improved insurance coverage for school districts. We have a couple of areas right now where the state is backing off coverage in certain areas, and we would like to see that reconsidered. But in some of the cases, particularly related to student abuse, mistreatment, the coverage that the district might have to make up could be up to $2 million. And so we really feel that's what insurance is for, and the state should cover that to protect our school districts. Okay, are you have any other questions or comments?
Any questions from anyone?
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you, Dr. Cleveland. As we move forward, we just all need to make sure we're really talking into our microphones just so that we can get the sound across on our live feed. And so we'll now go to approve the prioritized agenda and the proposed time allocations.
Madam President, this is Board Member Tyler. I'll make a motion to approve the prioritized agenda and proposed time allocations.
Board Member Jeff Morgan, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, we're now to our commendations, which we're excited about. And so we'd like to invite Jared Reader to come up. So these are our 2024, 2025 Special Education Staff Members of the Year. Jared Reader, our Executive Director of Special Services, will be presenting.
Thank you. President Yalbert, Dr. Cleveland, members of the board. During the 2425 school year, the Rio Rancho Public Schools Special Services Department launched new tradition to recognize the outstanding dedication, expertise, and compassion of our special education professionals. These individuals go above and beyond to ensure that every student receives the support, encouragement, and opportunities they need to exceed. Their work requires not only specialized knowledge, but also extraordinary patience, creativity, and a deep commitment to equity and inclusion. It is with great pride that we present to the Rio Rancho Board of Education the inaugural Special Education Staff Member of the Year recipients from each school, honoring their exceptional service and the positive impact they have made in the lives of our students, families, and school communities. Thank you to the support of the principals, assistant principals, special education instructional leaders, their colleagues, and their families for being here tonight. It is my privilege to invite up our very first Special Education Staff Member of the Year, extraordinary individuals whose dedication, compassion, and skills have touched the lives of students, families, and colleagues across the district. So at this time, can we bring up our staff? From Sierra Zool Elementary, Robin Brownell. Bissou Cleveland High School, Tiffany Feldman. Kalina Stilmerke Elementary, Erin Kierinski. Sorry, Erin. Our desert programs, Rebecca Sebedra. Enchanted Hills Elementary School, Mary Couch. Eagle Ridge Middle School, Eric Sanchez. Ernie Stapleton Elementary School, Rebecca Callenberger. Independence High School, Carla Chagas. Joe Harris Elementary School, Jennifer Coca. Lincoln Middle School, Lisa Romero. And Maggie, Maggie Cordova Elementary School, Amber Reto. Anoth Cave Junior Elementary School, Jamie Kush. Mountain View Middle School, Sherri Smith. Costa del Sol Elementary School, Latisha Romero. Rio Rancho Elementary School, Lisa McCartney. Rio Rancho High School, Brenda Gardunia. Rio Rancho Cyber Academy, Mary Scowan. Shaggy Stars preschool, Gladys Bean Brand. San Diego Vista Elementary School, Christine Phelps. Mr. Grande, Mr. Grande Elementary School, Jordan Lights. And the Tamara Wheeler Social Communication Programs, Eileen Nieto. Did I accidentally miss anybody or skip over anybody's time? Okay, great. Thank you all so much for being here tonight. I'm going to turn it over to the board.
Okay. Sorry, you're all late now. That's okay, if you don't want to turn all the way since the live feed has been going to get your backs like that. I just want to say thank you so much for all that you do. It's fun to see all of your faces. A lot of the names I know, many of you I do know, as I've seen in the, just throughout the district and doing all the work that you do. These services, my kids have used these services, and they're so important to our school district, and we couldn't do it without you. And so thank you so much for coming in and being a part. Like I said before the meeting, it was just like joy in the boardroom as everyone was talking. And that's truly part of what you do as you work through your schools, is you help to bring that joy to some hard things that you have to work through. So thank you so much for being here. I want Dr. Cleveland to be able to say his words and then finish on the board.
Again, congratulations and thank you. You know, it's over, been here a long time, and one of the things I've watched is the number of students, the percentage of special ed has grown every single year. And maybe even more importantly, the complexity of the job that you face has become harder every single year. And so we appreciate the time and effort that you put in to meeting the needs of some of our most difficult and most vulnerable children, because without you, they don't have much of the future in many cases. And so they are so dependent upon the support, the love and care that you give them. And so we want to thank you, all of you, for the really great job you do and for the really important paths that you see through every single day. Thank you, thank you for being here, and thank you for giving us a chance to tell you how much we appreciate the work that you do.
Thank you, thank you. Anyone from the board? Gary, would you like to have anything?
I would, I would like to have you close your eyes if you don't mind, and think about that most challenging kid that you have every day. And let me just say that that kid right now is saying, thank you, please keep showing up for me each and every day. You truly have gone above and beyond. God bless you for what you do. Thank you very much.
I just want to say congratulations and thank you for all that you do. And just remember this, with you, they have a chance. With you, they have a possibility. With you, they have an opportunity. Again, thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thanks. Beth Noyan, J.C.
My lips are a little close enough here. Yes, I want to extend my appreciation to each of you for the work that you do for our students and their families and working with the staffs in your schools and across the district, so, and actually the community too, so we can better understand the needs that you have to help the students that you do. So please keep doing what you're doing, and we're so very proud of you. Thank you very much.
Jessica?
Yeah, congratulations on being the inaugural class. Thank you, Jerry, for taking the time to recognize them. You guys most certainly deserve it. You have tough work every single day, and like the rest of the board has said, it doesn't go unnoticed, and our students are extremely grateful as we are. But thank you for everything you do, and congratulations on the recognition.
Thank you. I would love to take a picture as we bring them down. Those are so many, maybe just squish in. And I was hoping to come down, but I think we'll just have to be the lingering heads over you.
Get your shorter, little rib.
Second row, second.
Holler.
And then I even have to take a tour up here. Or I'll think I'll just go up. Can you get everyone, J.C.? Thanks for being here, and it's so grateful that we have so many principals here too, just supporting our staff. So thank you, everyone, for being in here tonight. I'm going to triple check on our appointment. We're still, we're going to keep moving. Okay. Actually, I just wait a second, just to give a moment for the, if you would like to step out, we'll give you a moment to be able to do that. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. I kind of missed all of the people that were here. But we'll go ahead and get back to our meeting, and we'll start with our public comment. So for tonight, we do not have any in-person public comment for the evening. We did receive one public comment from our online forum, which I will just summarize. So our online public comment forum, we have Thomas Grubish, and he has concerns with the neighborhood Cleveland Heights that is next to Cleveland High School, and that there's many students that are parking in that neighborhood and asking for some help on a way that we could remedy this situation so that we can have a positive relationship with the neighborhood that's there. So a Cleveland Heights neighborhood and Cleveland High School. That is all of our public comment for tonight. And of course, I, when they come in through the online forum, I just summarize them. So if any individuals do want to give public comment, they're always welcome to come in and have their own voice heard here in the boardroom. If you wish to do that, you just need to sign up before the meeting starts, and then you can do that. J.C., is it right, do we pull that right as the meeting? Right at 5:30? So, okay. Our next item is to approve the consent agenda.
Madam President, this is Board Member Tyler. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Board Member Jeff Morgan, a second.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll now go into the business portion of our meeting for tonight. And once again, just that reminder to keep that microphone closed so that they can hear us online as we go through these items. Our first business item will be our second reading of Policy 1022, reporting student abuse of alcohol and drugs. We have Michelle Havel, our Executive Director of Student Services, to present this, and along perhaps with Miranda, if she is needed, but I think I see her. Okay, so go ahead. Oh, she is here. Miranda Upington, our Director of Student Services as well.
Good evening, President Yalbert, Dr. Cleveland, and members of the board. This is our second reading for Policy 1022, and the revisions recommended about two weeks ago. Just to note, we will summarize the key points from this policy update, and then if there are any questions, we'll stand for those here at the end. One of the notable changes from the first reading to now, we did update the name of the policy based on the board recommendation to now re-reporting student use of prohibited legal substances, illicit drugs, and mood-altering substances. And additionally, just to highlight again the key points of the second reading, our goal is to align with our drug-free workplace policy verbiage and definitions based on NMPED requirements. So instead of reading just use and abuse of drugs and alcohol, it does incorporate that definition of the use of prohibited legal substances, illicit drugs, and mood-altering substances, and that is throughout the policy. We've also noted the emphasis with timely reporting being removed to exchange for immediate reporting, and we've also placed an emphasis on ensuring supervision in the interim between suspected substance abuse and reporting to either the school administrator as the first priority, if unavailable to security. So those are the two main pieces, is that immediate reporting is suspected on campus regarding a school-sponsored event or activity. And then again, that there's guaranteed supervision between the time that we suspect a student is under the influence and being on the report to admin security or a combination of both. Again, the updates are to remain student-focused on safety and also to ensure that we're able to connect students not only with safety and disciplinary measures, but also connecting to resources where appropriate. We'll stand for questions.
Dr. Cleveland, first, did you want to add anything as we go?
I think I covered most of it previously. I just really want to emphasize that all staff, as a legal, moral, ethical, and, you know, and particularly now legal, responsibility to report student drug abuse, or if it's now legal, responsibility to report student drug abuse, or if it's strongly suspected, to turn that over to school administration, and they will take it from there and investigate it thoroughly. We really need to help students who have those kinds of issues, and looking the other way is not a kind thing or a smart thing to do. And it's the same for if we have seen abuse of children or suspect abuse, we have a responsibility to report that as well. And so we need to do the right thing. And so this policy and this change just really emphasizes that if you see, it's the old saying, "If you see something, say something." And you absolutely must as a professional, and that, not just teachers, I want to stress that, not just teachers, any school employee who makes that observation or who has knowledge or that information has been reported to them.
Thank you. And I liked how you talked about, you know, we're not doing anyone any favors by not reporting these things. My family works in the medical field, and it's amazing how many young people are coming in and their livers are no longer working and those sort of things. And so I think this is an important one, and as teachers, sometimes, you know, you're trying to be friends with your students, and that's not helping our students. So I think this is a great policy, and so I am grateful that we are able to pass this. Questions from the board? Gary Tripp, any questions?
No questions.
Jeff Morgan? Okay, no questions. Any questions from anyone?
My only question, and it's probably for Lauren, is because of the name of the old policy is reflected on the agenda, when I make the motion to approve it, should I reflect the new name of the policy, the old one? Gotcha. Thank you.
Okay. So with that, we can go for a motion.
Thanks. This is Board Member Tyler. I will make a motion to approve Policy 1022, reporting student abuse of alcohol or drugs.
Board Member Jeff Morgan, a second.
Motion in a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries by zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations, and I just want to make that reminder, this is our second reading of this policy, and so there was more discussion last meeting on this one. Okay, our next is to consider the approval of the 2025-2026 Preventive Maintenance Plan, and we have Patrick Martinez, our Executive Director of Facilities, who will be presenting.
Right. Good evening, President Galbraith, Dr. Cleveland, and members of the board, here to present the 25-26 Preventive Maintenance Plan. And so I'll go through this, not quickly, but I'll kind of highlight some of the areas really that we update every year, and then go over some of the new things. But it's very similar to previous years, the framework anyway. We'll start with our, if you go to the next page, we have our introduction, which really states the, sorry, the next page, we have our district mission statement, our purpose, which kind of goes over the objectives really, or how we put this together, how we update it. And then one thing I'd like to highlight, if we can go to page five, is looking at our maintenance goals. And so really, the goal of this overall, right, is similar to what Dr. Cleveland said earlier, is to really look at our facilities and how can we be proactive instead of reactive, and what strategies can we take to make sure that we're maintaining our facilities and not letting them go by the wayside. So if you look at page five, see our performance goals. One of the things that, actually, I'm going to jump around a little bit. I'd like to go first with our previous goals, which is Section D, which we talked about the two goals that we did this past year, and one of the big ones was a fire safety audit. One of the things that we've noticed is our fire systems really need to be maintained, and what we've found is that when we go to maintain them, or if we have someone come in and look at them, there's a lot of data that's actually in them. So what we've done, we've been able to download that data and store it at the district office. That way, if we were to have a crash or anything like that, we can update it. And so that was one of the big things we did. And on top of that, obviously, we do a yearly round of audits to make sure all of our fire safety systems are functioning properly. And then another one that we had accomplished last year was outdoor lighting and looking at our outdoor lighting. We were able to add all of our schools to our VAS system, which is our building automation system. And so one of the things that we found is a lot of our outdoor lighting systems were on time clocks, and getting them under our building management system is really useful for not only setting schedules, but when we get into FUAs, making sure that we can manage the lighting, exterior lighting for events, and then in the event something goes wrong, it's something that we can actually work on remotely. We don't have to actually show it to the site to turn them on. We can monitor that. So that was one of the big accomplishments on that. And then on top of that, with being able to set that, you know, it just helps with energy efficiency as well. So one of the new goals for the upcoming year is to continue on the safety side and just conducting comprehensive safety inspection, but this time with all of our mechanical rooms. We find a lot of times our mechanical rooms are some of the areas that are neglected, both with not just pest management, but storage. People tend to use them for storage, and what that does is that creates just a bigger maintenance issue for, sometimes we have backflows, water heaters, things like that in those major mechanical rooms. So really just making sure we're doing inspections, quarterly PMs, and those types of things. And then another big one, and this is really something that we've been working on over the past few years, is just preventative maintenance for HVAC. That's one of the hardest things that we deal with, is the HVAC. And so just making sure that we're taking every opportunity to not only just maintain, but audit how we maintain the HVACs, and so checklist, preventative maintenance checklist, making sure that we're following all national standards. So we're going to be adopting the ASHRAE, the ACA standards, which is a checklist of about 180 tasks. And really what that does is that helps us to, not to be reactive, especially when school starts, we always find that there's a lot of issues when school starts, they start ramping up, but being able to do some standards of operation over the summer that really helped to prepare for that. So that's one of the big things that we're going to be looking at for the upcoming year. And then as you move through it, we go through our organizational chart, which is state somewhat the same. One of the major changes that we made is we've taken our warehouse out of, it used to be under our grounds, but we've kind of made it its own sub-department. They've really ramped up a lot of the work that they do with curriculum and a lot of the things that they provide for the district. And so we felt that having them, you know, kind of act as their own sub-department would be best. And then with our grounds department, taking it out of there, because one of the biggest things is our grounds and the lack of staff, and so they can really focus on some of those maintenance issues we have on the ground side. As we move through, we go through a lot of our, just our maintenance procedures. I won't bore you guys with a lot of that. It's very similar. It's very similar to last year, how we do work orders, how we, acquisitions of supplies. But one of the new things that we've done, if you go to page 13, is we've added a staff development and maintenance safety. And so really, the purpose of this is to really enhance the knowledge of our staff, and not only with really ramping up our preventative maintenance checklist and things like that, but also providing training. So one of the things that we, with our limited staff, we rely a lot on contractors, but also we'd like to start empowering our maintenance staff to have the knowledge and the necessary training to maintain the systems that we have in place. So that's one of the big things we're going to be working on. And with that, it comes to safety, making sure they understand safety around some of the systems that we maintain. And part of that is specifically with HVAC, and this kind of goes back to our goals for the years, really looking at HVAC and monitoring it even weekly. So we found that, you know, one week, things are working fine, and the next week, we have an issue. So we're going to, we've started already doing weekly meetings just to make sure that we're on top of it. We do have some schools that unfortunately, and they're on the bond to get replaced, but we really have to make sure that we're watching them weekly to make sure if something goes down, that we're on top of it and getting it taken care of that way the students are. And the last part of it is really going over the appendices, which are very similar to last time. And again, last year, we implemented, if you go to Appendix G, we implemented this matrix that we've used to really just manage and audit our work orders and making sure that we're allocating resources appropriately. So we still utilize that very much to make sure that if we have a staff member who maybe is a little bit lower on work orders, we can reallocate to them. And one of the new things that we've done this year, and I'd like to come back at some point and really go over the energy management side that we've gone into, but one of the things that we've implemented so far is we work with a company, Mountain Vector Energy, to implement a software that helps us to track, not only track our utility usage, but the city of Rio Rancho has gone through and installed smart meters on all the water. So they've done that. And so we were able to piggyback on that and actually start getting real-time data from water. And so what you see on Appendix H is really, that's a snippet of a graph that we get on a weekly basis that shows water leaks. And so it'll notify us as soon as there's a water leak, and it's in real time. And what's nice about it is it gives us information on whether it's an irrigation meter or a domestic meter, and an email is automatically sent out to the respective department. So if it's a domestic, our maintenance team will get an email immediately, or if it's an irrigation, our grounds team will get that. And so what it does, it just really helps us to stay on top of those water leaks to really conserve, to help us conserve water. We don't have to wait for the city to send us a notice to say, "Hey, you probably have a leak because your bill has done a, you know, a certain percentage." We can see this real time, and we get it on a weekly basis. Those are the major changes for this year, so with that, I'll stand for questions.
All right. Thank you for that. And I love that water leakage, because then we also don't flood a school out and...
Yes, yeah, we don't know that.
Right? Hopefully, as we look at some of those things. Dr. Cleveland, did you want to add anything to the report from the board?
I would just add, thank you for the plan. It's very comprehensive, and I had a lot of time and effort went into it. And, you know, the old saying, you get what you inspect and not what you expect. And so having a cycle of being sure to inspect everything and having a systematic approach toward it is certainly beneficial. So thank you for your hard work and your leadership with this plan, and we believe it will make our operational areas stronger, so thank you.
All right. We'll go to questions from the board. Do you have any questions? Gary Tripp, any questions to come in?
Yeah, I had three.
Okay.
Last year, I remember we discussed, there was a major pigeon problem at Vista Grande, and there was a lot of weed buildup around Sendia Vista. And then I noticed we went to contract services. So has that contract service assisted? I don't know, or have we found an answer to any of those problems? How do you feel that's coming along?
It has, and I can say, I can say it's gotten better. I'm not saying it's perfect. I think one of the struggles that we have is even the contracting companies that we have under our on-call contract struggle for staff. So that's one of the, that's a struggle that we have no matter what. But what I can say is that it has gotten a lot better. We're able to send out kind of large numbers of these contractors out before school starts to take care of the weeds and do some of that stuff. But like I said, it's not perfect. We are definitely having to move in that direction, unfortunately, and really rely on the contractors just due to the lack of staff. I can say though, that we, because of the new negotiated agreement and the salary increase for those maintenance staff, that has helped with people interested in the position. So we should be hiring three new grounds people, and hopefully, you know, that just gains traction on that side, so we don't have to rely so much on contractors. But I do think that we have had, it's gotten better.
And then I just have one last question that I think we need to, I don't know if we need to be more aware of, or we need to put like a goal setting, but with school starting earlier and earlier and earlier every year, I think we need to have a comprehensive HVAC plan. Not, you know, I think it needs to be discussed a lot more, just because of the fact that that thing goes down. But I know we, I know there's the use expenses, but, and I don't even know what exactly I'm asking for, but I think we need to stay on top of HVAC in this district this size. It's such a big, big thing. So, thank you.
I agree. I agree 100%. And that's kind of one of our focuses for this next year, and we've kind of, you know, based on what happened last year, we had a major shutdown. But, you know, coming into this year, we were really monitoring throughout the year. We're still trying to figure out our best way to not only conserve energy over the summer by bringing systems down, but not causing an issue, which is kind of what happened last year. So we're working through that, but I 100% agree that just, we're just going to keep building our, building up how we monitor and maintain those systems.
Thank you. Patrick, do you by any chance, and I don't know how much we have put into HVAC over the last, say, three to five years?
That's a great question. I mean, it's got to be over $30,000.
We've made a huge commitment to air conditioning our classrooms, but if you're in one, it doesn't, it doesn't really matter, it's just miserable. And so we've made a lot of strides, but I remember, Tripp, we're not there yet. We're still having, we still have some challenges. But I think this year, almost all of our schools started with air conditioning. We have some very isolated problem areas, but not huge ones like we have had some years. Progress is being made, but we're not there. Yeah.
It is hard. I mean, we're starting the school year out with 100-degree heat, you know, so it's hard to keep up with all those things. Thank you. Jeff Morgan?
Do I have any questions? But just want to say thanks for all the work. I know this is a lot to do, so thank you so much. Appreciate it.
That's enough.
No questions, just thank you very much. I have to recall you and your staff and what you do, you have a big job to do. Thank you so much.
Thanks. Jessica Tyler.
No questions. Okay. Thank you. So I'll make a motion to approve the 2025-2026 Preventive Maintenance Plan.
Remember now, a second motion? Motion by Jessica Tyler, second, by Board Member Miller, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries by zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Our next is to consider the approval of the Memorandum of Understanding Between Rio Rancho Public Schools and the Rockley Family Foundation. Dr. Kirchschmidt, our Executive Director of Fine Arts, will be presenting.
Good evening, President Galbraith, members of the board, Dr. Cleveland. Excuse me. Before, since this is the first time I've stood before you this school year, I just wanted to remind, remind you, bring to your attention, maybe both, that this school year, by proclamation of the governor, is the year of arts in education. It was proclamation signed, presented last spring. I was spearheaded by the New Mexico Advisory Council on Art Certification. This is the same organization that spearheaded the effort to increase the multiplier for the fine arts education a couple years ago. I served on that board, and it's a celebration of the arts this year in our schools, and so I'll keep you up to date throughout the year. So it somewhat relates to what we're doing right now, so. The Rockley Family Foundation is a, as Dr. Cleveland said, a foundation based out of Colorado. We've had this partnership since 2018. They, in exchange for allowing them to run a piano sale in our facilities to raise money for the foundation, they return any kind of gift, usually around the totaling about $140,000 every year. They lease us both acoustic and electronic pianos for our schools, which are in addition to our current school inventory. One wonderful thing about the partnership is that they update the equipment as new technology comes in or as the pianos get older. This is especially important for electronic pianos, where the technology changes rather rapidly, so. That's it in a nutshell, so I will stop for questions.
Okay. Thank you. This is a great partnership. So any questions from the board? Any questions from the board? Dr. Cleveland, did you want to add anything?
It is a unique partnership, and I just kind of wonder what led folks to create this foundation, and it's been going on for a long time and extremely successful, but we're glad we're part of it, and that we're a recipient and can benefit from it. So we thank the foundation, and thank you for reaching out and making this connection for us.
And I might add, this part, the foundation has partnerships across the United States. I believe in every state, law, university, school, and justice center.
Wow. That's incredible. Thank you. So we can go to the motion.
Board Member Jeff Morgan, I make a motion for the approval of the Memorandum of Understanding Between Rio Rancho Public Schools and Rockley Family Foundation Incorporated.
Board Member Tyler, I'll second the motion. She's by Jeff Morgan, second by Jessica Tyler, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries by zero. Our next item, once again, by Dr. Kirchschmidt, our Executive Director of Fine Arts, is the approval of the agreement between the Soundfei Opera and Rio Rancho Public Schools.
President Galbraith, members of the board, Dr. Cleveland. This MOU is for a partnership agreement, as you said, we have for many years. This partnership with the opera is their Alto program, which is actor working through opera. So they provide teaching artists, as Dr. Cleveland said, to come and work with our students. They're student-produced operas. So a teaching artist, two teaching artists, one with background in music, one with a background in drama, meet with our students and guide the students to produce their own music and their own libretto for these mini operas. It's a... It's a, uh, s- uh, process-oriented program, uh, to, in the creative process, however, it does have a culminating performance at the end of each semester. So the, um, the, it's free to all students, it's funded through Fine Arts Education Act money that we receive. Uh, in the fall, this, this is manifested in, in every middle school as an after-school club, opera club, where the kids can come in and work with the artists, teaching artists. In the spring, it's offered through the SAFE program. And, uh, again, thank you to Student Services, we, we partner with them in this endeavor. It's through the SAFE program, half the elementary schools every, every other year participate, or every year participate. So, um, this year, the, we are focusing on Clint Delarte, Enchanted Hills, Maggie Cordova, Mark Luther King Jr., Vista Grande, and, uh, Joe Harris. Um, and so every other year, we, we do one half, you do the other half. Until the opening of Joe Harris, there's an easy split, five one year, five the next. When Joe Harris opened, it, it was a little bit of a problem because we didn't have funding, uh, nor did the, the opera have, uh, staffing to, to include Joe Harris. Uh, this year, we are able to do both. Uh, we are able to bring Joe Harris into, into the rotation, which we're very happy about. And I believe that's it, that's all type of questions.
Okay, thank you. And I, I love the Santa Fe Opera, so I love that we have this one as well. Any questions from the board or comments, and comments from you, Dr. Cleveland?
It, it's another example of, of the power partnerships, and this has brought some wonderful opportunities to our student staff for many years. And, uh, it, it's, it's, uh, kind of a precursor to the integrated arts programs that we're going to be doing this year at San Diego Vista, Enchanted Hills. So we've seen it work on a limited basis, and we think it's going to work very well, um, integrated into two elementary schools. But, uh, again, thank you for your, your hard work. And again, it just shows partnerships can really bring good things to, to students. And in this case, uh, it has been financially just a tremendous, um, asset to our district. So, uh, thank you for that, uh, for that effort. Thank you.
Board member, board member Jeff Morgan, I make a motion for the approval of agreement between the Santa Fe Opera and Rio Rancho Public Schools.
Board member Tyler, all second. Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, by two.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, okay, our next is our resolutions. And so our resolutions, I think, I'm trying to say, I think I'll announce them all and we can kind of just take them and work through them as a group and ask questions as we need to. So, um, we have resolution twenty-five zero zero four, which is support for career technical education. And resolution twenty-five oh oh five, funding for adequate buses. Resolution twenty-five oh oh six, teacher licensure advancement. Uh, resolution twenty-five double oh seven, uh, additional funding for special education positions. And resul- resolution twenty-five zero zero eight, increasing capital improvement funding. Resolution twenty-five zero zero nine, increase in funding for cybersecurity and computer refresh. Resolution twenty-five ten, comprehensive review of S E G funding formula. And resolution zero one one, improve insurance coverage for school districts. Did I get through all of them? And so Lauren Hatch, our chief, uh, Nugo council, will go through these with us and we can ask any additional questions. This was, um, items that we discussed, or I was not here, but everyone discussed at the last board meeting and gave many comments on it, so. And the floor to you, Lauren Hatch.
Thank you, Madam President, uh, members of board, Dr. Cleveland. Uh, yeah, we had a pretty detailed discussion last time, and, uh, I took the comments that the board made, and I, uh, I think I pretty much captured them all. Uh, either in, in different versions of ones that we produced in the past, and I think I did two or three brand new ones. I, I can go through them all, or if there's just any questions, or if there's changes you would like to see. I did speak with, uh, or I communicated with Joe Guillen from the New Mexico School Boards Association. He says, it would be fine if we turned them in tomorrow.
That would be good. Well, so everyone had an opportunity to review these, they were in our board documents. Do we have any questions or comments that we want to make? We can start, um, well, let me just go to Dr. Cleveland real quick. Do you have any comments before we go to questions and comments?
No, really, just to re-capture the changes that you wanted, I think is the most important here. And, uh, we think that, I think that Lauren did that.
Pretty, pretty.
Uh, but if there's any area that we didn't get, please let us know, we'll make that adjustment now.
Okay, and so I'll just kinda go through everyone, it's okay if you don't have comments, that's okay. Gary Tripp, though, do you have anything that you?
I would, I was just looking at them yesterday, and I was looking at them, and I didn't, I didn't really see my comments captured. Um, like, uh, two-tier bus, you know, districts that have more than two tiers, and, um...
We actually, I did put that in there.
Okay. Uh, and then instructional materials, I didn't see that one, I didn't know that was captured by the school boards last year, and that's why it was omitted. So I was, I was trying to look for the comments I made, but when I looked at the minutes, our comments aren't reflected in the map, so.
Was it by any chance in the school boards?
It might have been in the school boards.
That one?
Yeah. But...
So we're looking for the two-tier, that's in the...
Yeah, okay, so if you look at, on the two-tier funding, if you look at resolution twenty-five dash zero zero five, funding for adequate school buses, we go down near the bottom, it's the second to the last paragraph, be it further resolved, uh, that the state should enable all school district bus operations to provide to and from school transportation on no more than two tiers.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And focused funding on any district not able to, to be able to meet that, so that they can
Thank you.
be able to do that.
Thank you, I didn't see that. My fault.
There's a lot to go through.
It's, it's a lot.
It's a lot of resolutions and a lot of, a lot of words, so, okay.
We thought perhaps it would be fewer resolutions, but we actually had the same number of resolutions as last year.
You know, we're always trying to, to bring them down, especially 'cause, 'cause board member Trip sits on that committee who has to go through. Are you, you're still sitting on that committee, is that correct?
Yeah.
Can you pull up number ten, one, for the S E G? This, this one includes instructional materials, honor this law very. Good.
Yeah, we put instructional materials in ten and S E G. It's a second whereas.
And it's also in...
And then we also did, uh, the, the school safety per pupil funding comment that you had in that same one.
And it's also adjusted that, therefore be it further resolved, that, uh, consider increased sustain, no more funding for instructional materials?
No, I, I didn't know that it would be part of a review. That it was gonna be a legislative, kind of action item. So, I, like I said, I, I didn't.
Okay.
I guess I didn't express it right. I'm okay, though. I mean, we're asking for a review of funding. And I thought that was kind of a thing that we do every year, so I didn't look, I would accept it, but...
What, was that the?
On the instructional materials?
On the instructional material?
No, um, reviewing, a comprehensive review of the S E G funding formula.
Yeah.
I believe is something that my recommendations made every year to the legislative person.
In, in that resolution, um, the suggestion was that they take it up again like they did in two thousand and eight, where they did a comprehensive review. And they actually used, uh, the organization A I R to do a study that was pretty, pretty comprehensive. Um, and then we, there's a few areas of funding where, uh, that the S E G doesn't account for now. Like, it doesn't provide funding for, uh, security features, like the ones that the district implements here. Uh, it doesn't include funding specifically for social workers. And, and that's something I, I think we would like to see. And then, uh, we're pretty consistently underfunded in instructional materials.
Is that good, Gary? Okay, uh, Jeff Morgan, any questions or anything? Jessica, are there any questions on it? So we can take these as a group?
I think you could take them as a group, it's just as long as it's clear what you're voting on.
So, I'll make a motion, okay? Madam President, this is board member Tyler, I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five zero zero four, support for career technical education. Twenty-five zero zero five, funding for adequate buses. Twenty-five zero zero six, teacher licensure advancement. Twenty-five zero zero seven, additional funding for special education positions. Twenty-five zero zero eight, increase in capital improvement funding. Twenty-five zero zero nine, increased funding for cybersecurity and computer refresh. Twenty-five dash zero one zero, comprehensive review of S E G funding formula. And twenty-five dash zero one one, improve insurance coverage for school districts.
Board member Jeff Morgan, I make the, okay, do I have to go through all of them?
No. Just a second, just a second.
You know, I was gonna say, uh, uh, okay, let me fix this and I, I'll ask you a question. A second, thank you.
Perfect, listen.
I'm getting ahead of us. I do have.
Right, right, we have a motion in a second, and then we'll go for your question. Um, all in favor of approving these?
Aye.
I guess my question, Lauren, with as many as she read, could somebody have, can come in after she did five and then I pick up and take the next? Or does it have to be the same person?
It, it could be done any way where it's clear what you're voting on.
Okay.
So it could have been two, could have been five, it could have been all. The cleanest way to do it is one at a time, but...
Okay.
If, if, if the vote is ultimately gonna be that everybody supports it, then it's fine.
Okay, I wanted to give my break. Number six sounded like she was gasping.
It's a lot of reading. It's a lot of writing.
Thank you.
All right.
And I guess you clarify your question. Your question was like, could I have stopped reading at six and you picked it up? I think the motion had to come from the singular person, and I could have made a motion for those five, for, you know, for eight, and you could have done nine through.
Okay, good, good, thank you.
So that's good. Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
We'll get those in too, they just sent that reminder, like, today, the last couple days. And, Advanced Planning, um, so we have, just really quick, we have that region meeting coming up, um, that's gonna be hosted by Albuquerque Public Schools. Um, I don't know if anyone's had that opportunity to let J C know. I know I haven't, I live too late to sign me up for that.
I haven't even gotten the sound phone yet.
Okay, so, correct, it's actually the thirtieth, not on the thirty.